Everybody ready? I call this October ninth, meeting of the York County Planning Commission to order. There are no changes to the agenda. Have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Quick, quick question.
Yes.
So, just as I looked over this, items one and item eight. It seems like item eight might have some impact on item number one, even though that's because both of those are happening in around the same area. Does that change anything about what we discuss or how we discuss it?
Well, I assume that if we had issues, we would just, I would say, I don't, I don't think so, but...
Okay, just, just checking because it, one of them had to, you know, we have a new, an updated TIA for one community, and then we've got a discussion about a second community plat approval that has the TIA tied in with it, so I'm...
And their TIA is good, so...
Separate things.
Yes, separate things.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
Yep.
So Bonnie, we all went, we're all approved in the agenda.
She's like, "I got that one." Okay, so, did anyone have any comments or concerns about the meeting agenda, uh, meeting?
Minutes, minutes?
Minutes? Nope. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Moving on to new business for this evening, the first subdivision.
Good evening, Marion Ray, Associate Planner for York County. Our first preliminary plat this evening is for Avonlea at Allison Creek. You saw its sister property last month. So, it's a few runs of properties here. The vicinity map is on the corner of Daimler and Charlotte Highway. The proposed high school is gonna be just up Daimler Road from it, and it's across the street from the Daimler property. This is pod, I lost the number, uh, one of the pods of the Allison Creek PD. Go through the prelimi, the preliminary plat here. This is their open space preliminary plat, I picked the one that's a little easier to see. The, um, a zone PD is the part of that big Allison Creek, there's fifty-four lots on twenty-six point three acres. We'll go through the findings here. Developers provided willingness and capability letters. The willingness and capability letter has been provided by York County, and staff has approved it, so the second finding does not apply. Third finding, the proposed land use and density complies with the zoning district requirements. Single-family residential is allowed use within this PD. The PD zoning district does not specify a density, but the development agreement has a maximum residential density of three dwelling units per acre in this pod. Uh, it's not overall, it's just this pod, um, or a couple of them. Uh, the development has a density of two point oh five residential units per acre as developed. The applicant agrees to adequately mitigate the impacts to the transportation network as identified in the traffic impact analysis. This is as part of the same TIA as last month's ABR fourth. For number five, the development's access from Daimler Boulevard, which is maintained by York County. Sites bounded to the north and east by residentially zoned parcels, and to the west and south by Charlotte Highway and Daimler itself. Sidewalks are required and have been provided. Twenty percent open space is required per the PD, and the development is actually providing fifty-five point nine three percent. So staff, a tree survey and all tree requirements have been reviewed and accepted by staff also. So staff recommends approval. Do we have any questions?
I've got one, Marion. On the first page, it said, each lot will be at least five thousand square feet, is that five thousand?
Uh...
Or is that a little bigger than that? Because that's pretty small.
Trying to find the five? Yes, five thousand square feet in size. They are very small.
Wow, thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm, you guys are a little bit ahead of me tonight. Just a couple of questions about TIA's in general that may relate this to the other one, which had me confused as I was looking through all this. So, we have a TIA that was approved for this group, and then later on this evening, we have another larger TIA to review and approve that's for something that's happening further up the same road, right?
It's revised TIA tonight.
Right, and so, for, for my education, having not been through a lot of these type of situations, how does all that get co-mingled together? Because this TIA was looking at the impact of this, the other's looking at the impact of that, how are they considering what each other is doing and what the overall impact is? So do you follow what I'm asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, uh, if they have to pay into mitigation, we keep track of those funds, so it's basically like a bond issue. So, um, we keep track of the funds that have been paid in for certain programs, it's all moving pieces, and we have records of everything. So, um, say another subdivision wanted to come in across from two seventy-four, and this subdivision had already been paying into the Daimler intersection. Well, that subdivision would then change the, the amounts over there, they would have to pay into the Daimler intersection, and we would have records. We keep records of everything, because it's all a sliding scale, moving piece.
Okay, but I guess, I guess part of what I'm asking is, we've got fifty-four units here, okay? Assuming everybody had two cars, that'd be a hundred, but, you know, somewhere between fifty-four and a hundred, all right? Now, depending on which way those people go coming out of here, that's gonna affect the development that's further up the road in the intersection between forty-nine and two seventy-four. If I got all my geography right, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and so...
And we have the math on this TIA, so when the new one came in, we were able to, um, review it based on the math we already have for this one.
Right, and so what happens is the math from this one would then get added to that?
It not added so much as, um, it affects the algorithms for the other one. It's, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm basically trying to give you a little bit of what I know.
I'm with you.
But it's, it's, the greater numbers affect the other numbers, and it's not a one-to-one. So, it's all, it's an algorithm, it's percentages.
Okay, um, all right, thank you.
I did have a question.
Sure.
Marion, there's a stream buffer that's on the west side of this, or the left side. And there are some of the lots that are actually in, appear to be in that buffer. And it states that although the lot lines are proposed in the stream buffer, there's no grading allowed within the buffer.
Right, and that'll be addressed during civils, because right now, the actual area of the stream has not been truly identified. And if there's any impact into it, we do have ways to mitigate the impact. So there may be, um, there's certain areas that they can do impact for, or mitigate impact, but not, they can't obviously paper the stream.
Right, or they can't build a house on the stream either, because the way that they've got it set up, it appears that the houses could be in the stream. At least the creek buffer, not...
And it'll be addressed during civils when we have the exact numbers.
Thank you.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry, and then I had you talk to me about all that, and then I forgot to ask, when was the TIA for this one done?
This was twenty-twenty? Twenty-twenty.
Okay. And th, this is where I get really confused, so three years' worth of everything that's changed in the area, and that TIA from three years ago is still good today?
Yes, so the impact for, it was twenty-twenty, and then any future impacts coming in have to also do a TIA, unless it's a large enough number that it changes the algor, or small enough number doesn't change an algorithm. So, um, we don't really have any for this one, because we don't really have any coming in right now. But there is, uh, on the other side of Westport, there's another subdivision preliminary plat they're working on now. The numbers will affect this intersection, so they will have to do their part of the mitigation for the intersection. So if it causes something to fail, they have to do something different.
Okay, so as long as things haven't substantially changed in this particular area since the TIA was done, it is good? And then if something affects this area because of another development somewhere else, that group's then responsible for mitigating here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Think I'm getting it.
Basically, if a, a development causes an intersection to fail, they're responsible for fixing it. We're paying a percentage toward it.
If I can go ahead and add to that for your help as well, um, when they're scoping the TIA, we're gonna look at what's going on in the areas. We identify all these different projects, and they're required to include those in their analysis. And when they do that, they're gonna project out their build-out time. So they're gonna say, "This is gonna take me so many years to be able to do this." And so you have existing conditions, and then you have your, your growth factors. They'll figure out that we're gonna grow at an average of maybe one point five, two point, whatever it's gonna be, per year. And they factor that into the calculation to figure out, we are gonna have this background growth no matter what, and what we do, we're gonna have some growth. So they factor that into the actual build-out without any kind of development, then they add their development and see how that all gets. They kind of layer these things on from being, you know, what we're doing right now, what we're gonna be adding, and then we're gonna be growing no matter as a county. And that's all calculated based upon their, their build-out period. That's how it's done.
In agenda my, agenda item eight, that TIA, you'll see.
We'll talk about it more than that.
You'll see what they actually do, because it is a really comprehensive thing.
So we have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? So, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay.
All right, we'll move on to our second and final preliminary plat for this evening. It's the Vista at Lake Wiley. My little planner self is excited about this one, because it is our first cluster subdivision. So under the new code that we adopted last year, we had a cluster subdivision added in, and it's basically for properties like this that are harder to develop, um, with its zoned RUD. So one-acre lots would be very hard to get onto this property with all the challenges. So cluster subdivisions allow them to get a little more density in exchange for fifty percent open space, some inner connectivity, that kind of thing. And they get some smaller lot sizes, too. We'll go through here, this is the vicinity map. It is in Lake Wiley, it is just north of the bridge, um, two seventy-four, north of Walmart. Right at the intersection of Pole Branch, that's where the new road intersects into for the entire neighborhood. And I use the open space one again, they're very pretty, thank you, Brandon. The zoning is RUD with Lake Wiley overlay, a hundred and forty lots, a hundred and seventy-eight point seventy-nine acres. And I went ahead and included lot size in on this one since it is brand-new, these are fifteen thousand square foot lots, minimum. You can tell tons of open space, the cluster subdivision has separation requirements. So you can have no more than, we just changed it again, fifteen? Starting at fifteen, and they have to be separated by two hundred feet. So you can see the little, little sections of the neighborhood, so it's like a neighborhood within a neighborhood. Plenty of open space, they have trails, a multi-use path, it's gonna be kind of a neat situation. But again, you can see the stream bed areas, it's a challenging piece of land. We'll go through the findings here. Willingness and capability letter has been provided by York County and accepted by staff, so number two does not apply. Number three, the proposed land use and density complies with the zoning district requirements, so single-family residential isn't allowed use. And the cluster subdivision requirements within the RUD zoning district has a maximum density of one dwelling a unit per acre. And the proposed development has a density of point seven eight units per acre, so it's just under. The applicant agrees to adequately mitigate the impacts of the transportation network. A tier-two TIA has been completed and approved, and mitigation is required. For number five, the development provides adequate street connectivity and pedestrian facilities to address public health and safety. The development is accessed from two seventy-four, which is SCDOT maintained. Sidewalks, multi-use trails, and walking trails are required and provided within the development. And then, uh, for the open space and buffers, a fifty percent open space is required and has been provided. And then the final finding, a tree survey of required tree save areas has been completed and accepted by staff. So we recommend approval. I'll go back to the picture. Have questions for staff?
Yeah, Marion, I got one. Um, page, page twenty-four, item number three, it says, impacts to transportation network as, as identified in the TIA have been adequately mitigated. And then it says below that mitigation is required. I know it's just kind of a change on words, but it's...
Yeah, um, adequately, has been, so there's a fund they have to pay to into, so that, it's one of those, like, they have done that, but they don't actually have to do certain other things, it's...
Yeah, but it says mitigation is required.
Yes.
It's like, it hasn't been checked. You see what I'm saying in number three?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I do have the notes from our traffic planner on what they do have to do.
Oh, okay.
So construction of the eastbound side access with a mini, minimum a hundred and fifty-foot internal protected item, a stem, and two egress lanes, fifty feet, and a shared right, shared through right lane are required. This is at the two seventy-four Pole Branch side access, and this is all written in engineer, just FYI. Striping of a northbound left turn lane with a minimum a hundred and fifty feet of storage stacking. Traffic signal modification to accommodate the fourth intersection leg, so they're gonna have to add a little, another branch. And then down south, I'm gonna get it back over here, this intersection right down here requires some mitigation, and it's actually, they're gonna pay into a fund. They're gonna pay thirty-three thousand and some change toward future transportation improvements.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah.
So the Pole Branch intersection, they're actually completing that work, and then paying in for the other one?
Yes, yes.
Any additional questions?
And date on the TIA for this one? This is just recent that all this TIA was completed for this one?
This one was twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one, okay.
Maybe early twenty-twenty-two.
Marion, it appears that there's one way in and one way out, which I guess is fine for this size development.
Yes, um, you can do up to a hundred and forty-nine lots before you require.
There's another road, Harper Davis, uh, there is no future plan or approval to...
The residents of Harper Davis respectfully requested.
Okay, that's fine. We would like to do that, too.
Any additional questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Is there any discussion? All those in...
Actually, I do have one...
Okay.
Thing to discuss. I noticed on, uh, the grand tree, there's, there's a sheet that's referred to as a grand tree demo plan, and there are quite a few grand trees to be removed. Is that...
The approval of the preliminary plat does not imply approval of removal of grand trees. They would have to go for a variance if it was outside what staff could approve.
Is this outside that?
I don't know.
It seems like a lot.
It does, but I don't know, I, I'm not in charge of that threshold.
Uh, yeah, that is correct, we are not testing those trees, um, they have to, uh, tell us why they should be removed, and if we don't agree with that, they will then come back and tell you why they should be removed, they'll come back to you.
Oh, that's right.
What's the timeline on that?
For the, the removal of the trees? That'll come back with the civil construction plans, so when they submit those, they'll have to defend whether or not they're going to, or how they can have, need to remove those. At that point, we would say, you know, no, or yes, or whatever.
Sure.
Then would come before you, so whenever they do those plans, it's usually within a year or so.
Okay.
I will say that there is a pretty comprehensive tree search...
Yeah.
On the property, which...
They did a very good job with that.
Yes. But there are a lot that are proposed to come out, as Matt said, stated.
I'd like to ask if, uh, the motion can be amended, if that's possible, to reflect, um... I would like to see redesigned to eliminate the, really the three cluster areas that are of concern, which are lots one, two, and three, seventy-four through eighty, and ninety-four and ninety-five.
Marion, can you please go back to the, the drawing for the preliminary plat, please?
So, one, two, and three are up by the road here.
Yeah.
And then it was seventy-four through eighty? I can't see that far.
Obviously, you can, you can make that motion if you choose, or you can really go through the, uh, the process where they'll have to identify that. I suppose we're specifying it right now, which one it needs to be. If that's your wish, if you choose.
I'll leave it up to the group to decide what you, what y'all think is best.
You talk about the detail in the motion, in the amended motion, the, the lots that are in question? Yeah, I think that would be a good addition.
So you...
Seventy-four through eighty.
Seventy-four through eighty. And ninety-four and ninety-five.
And those are up here.
So Matt, is that eleven lots?
Uh...
Ninety-four and ninety-five?
Twelve total.
Twelve.
Twelve?
If that's okay with you, Tom?
Absolutely.
And the second was in town, you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you concur?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's fine. So are you making a motion this, this...
No, I'm amending, I'm asking for Tom to amend his motion to include that.
Okay, so I'm amending my motion for us to look at the grand trees in the design process, and so stipulated one through three lots, one through three, seventy-four through eighty, and ninety-four through ninety-five.
A second.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused, so what are we asking them to do? Are we saying that we don't want them to build on those lots at all, or we need them to do something more than what we'll be going through when the civil, or when the engineering comes through? What are we asking?
Right, whatever, what Diane said.
But that will happen regardless.
Oh.
So I, Matt, are you asking that we stipulate that they cannot take that, those groves out, period?
I would like, my, I'm asking that those not, those lots, um, be removed from the plant so those grand tree areas can stay.
Oh.
Those are, those are, those are the three of the largest clusters on the property.
So, if, if I've understood correctly, you would like to see those lots pulled out as the design shows today to preserve those grand trees, and see if there is a modification to the design where they may be able to put those lots somewhere else, so long as they're still... And, and use that really as their tree save instead of getting rid of so many of the grand trees.
Correct, I'm not asking them to remove lots from the plan just from those areas. They don't have to, I'm not asking to reduce the number of lots in the plan, just removing development in those areas.
Which may result in a reduction of lots, but...
Right, because, because of the difficulty in doing a cluster subdivision, that separation, you can't just simply scooch some lots over, and, um, because now you've, you've, you no longer have that two-hundred-foot separation between the different clusters. So it's, it's almost like if they can't do them there, they have to remove those lots. Because like I said, it's, to be able to find another place to put those lots, you wouldn't find a place.
All right, maybe, maybe warrants a little bit more discussion than Diane, if I could go a little further. So if the process goes along as normal with us approving this as is, without any modifications or conditions, can you walk everybody through what the process is with grand trees, and what would happen if they did wind up trying to take those out?
Right, so they would submit their civil construction plans, and they would identify those trees as to, and as to why they need to be removed. Why, whether it's through the grading, they just, they have to go. And they would then offer a mitigation plan, so we will then plant trees somewhere else on the, on this development. Staff would review that, and there are criteria, that's what we would accept those or not. And if we felt that didn't meet the criteria, then we would say, "No, you must come back to the planning commission and request a waiver from that grand tree requirement." And I will say that we don't, we, we receive those more frequently with more of a, a commercial or industrial project, because those are a lot harder to be able to move those large building footprints. It's much easier to remove a house and a, and a lot, and so for staff, we would probably not side on developer. We would say, "No, I'm sorry, you must keep that tree." But I can't speak for it until we actually see it, so I can't tell you exactly how we would react to it, but that's kind of our, our, our take on residential developments, that they should be able to keep those trees.
Okay, and let, let me just clarify a little bit further, then, the calling of the ball in the strike is up to you all.
That's correct.
So you could approve and allow them to take the trees without it coming back to the commission?
That's correct, we could do that, we have the authority to do that, but...
So I think that's where our discussion comes down to, if we as a group want to leave that, or we wanna make a statement here that, no, we, we really wanna have that condition in place, so... You wanna elaborate some more since you brought us down this road, sir?
I, I mean, it's just, it's very simple, I mean, there's, you know, there's three spots on there, you can call them whatever you want, call them hotspots, whatever, I mean, it's just, um...
Do you, do you have that slide in here, Marion?
I don't have that slide.
You don't, okay.
It's in your packet, though.
It's in your packet, though.
I just, for purposes of everybody being able to see it, when he talks about the hotspots, I know what he's talking about, because we have the copy, that's all.
That's really, it's what it comes down to, is, I mean, those are, you know, the whole idea of the ordinance was to preserve grand trees, and this is really flying in the face of it, where, you know, it's, it's not as if it's just one or two, or, you know, a handful on a large site like this. I mean, this is, I can't even count how many are being removed. And, you know, the, the mitigation is six hundred and forty-three, three-inch trees. And, you know, the, the mitigation is 643 three-inch trees. There's got to be a better plan.
Right, so if I might make a suggestion, and we'll find out how far out of bounds I'm going here. But if we were to approve with the condition that any mitigation of grand trees would need to come back to us for approval, just leave it at that. And that's what I'm saying. I don't know if that puts us out of bounds or not.
I don't know that we can do that.
Well, I think, I mean, if it's up to staff and then they come back to us for the, I mean, because they could essentially say yes, and then if we come back and don't like the mitigation plan, but they've already approved, I mean, I think...
That's right. Once the plat's approved, if they decide to do that, then it won't come back to us at all. Right? And I think that's what Matt's kind of voicing as a concern of trying to say, hey, we want to make sure that all the changes in the regulations that went in there really...
Stick.
Stay the way that we did that, and that, that was the reason. So I don't know if just saying, hey, if there's any mitigation plans discussed or whatever, that rather than being specific about you must remove these places, but that we need to approve any mitigation plan at a later date. I don't know if that is something we can or can't do. That's why I'm...
Honestly...
Of course you can. You can say that as a condition that the, um, any tree mitigation plan discovered in civil construction must come back to the planning commission for review and approval. And that way, that takes away the staff being able to do something that you might not want us to do. That puts the power back into your hands. So you aren't eliminating anything right now. You're just saying that it must be returned at civil construction.
Okay, and...
So there's, there's the change, that's the change I would propose for the...
All right.
...the motion is that any grand tree mitigation plan come back to the planning commission for review and approval. So that would be my motion. I'm asking you to amend, Tom.
And if, if I could, one more thing here just to make sure. I don't know if we need to go into executive session, but should we get an opinion from our legal assistants over here to make sure this is all what we need to do?
Happy to go into executive session and discuss it further.
Okay. I don't want to make this long and drawn out, but I think it might be worthy for us to just get a little advice here real quick on this one before we do something.
So you're requesting that?
I'm, I'm going to request executive session for some legal advice. Yes, ma'am.
I'll second that motion.
Let's see. All those in favor? We will be right back.
Back from executive session and no action was taken. So at the moment, there is a motion and a second on the table.
And, excuse me, I would like to withdraw my previous motion.
Are there any new motions?
Um, I'm sorry, your motion to, your amendment or your, your main motion?
The main motion or the amendment?
What's that?
Which are you withdrawing, or both?
The amended motion.
Amended motion, okay. So the main motion still stands of approval.
So is there discussion on the main motion which was approval?
Correct.
All right, I would ask for a new amendment. In the event it doesn't come back, that staff about what the resultant mitigation plan was, only if it doesn't come back to the plan of commission.
Okay, so is there any additional discussion or questions on that amendment?
We need a second on that amendment.
And I'll second that.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Now is there any discussion or additional questions? Okay, so all of those in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand? Anyone opposed? Okay.
So then, I'm sorry, so that's the vote on the amendment technically, so we need a, our vote on the main motion.
Okay. Got to move backwards on this one, so, yes, thank you. And for the first, the first motion to approve, is there any, let's see, we have a second?
Antonio's?
I say you seconded, correct?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Moving on from subdivisions to rezonings.
Okay, the, the first resoning this evening is case number twenty-three, twenty-six for Jeff Solano on Param Road in York. Two five, four, five, six, zero, 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 one, one, one. So requested to rezone a one point nine seven acre parcel from RSF thirty to NC. And that's to establish an ice cream machine sales and repair business at the existing building that's already there. This is a result of a code enforcement case and there were three violations. One of them with the parcels being used, unpermitted uses, he's actually doing the business there right now, so this rezoning would resolve that. Storage of a shipping container slash tractor trailer that has been removed, which allowed the zoning actually to, to go forward. And just general property maintenance and clutter and debris, and that, that still remains, but that does not prevent the rezoning to happen. Property is located on the intersection of South Param Road and Highway forty-nine. The area here is still relatively rural, a large lot, there's lots of open space and trees. Zooming in, there are some existing non-residential uses at this intersection of Charlotte Highway and Param Road. And there's existing church right there, as well as a, a landscape business. So they've already established some non-residential uses at this location. And as you can see there, that storage building is about five thousand square feet. It was permitted as a residential structure, and the property owner lives next door. And that's where he was using to store items, which has now become a place for him to use for his business. Relatively flat, no environmental features. Zoning for the area, the majority of the area adjacent to the parcel is still RSF thirty. There is also RSF forty, AGC, and RED in the area. The comprehensive land use map shows this parcel as the rural residential land use designation for the future. As nearby would be single semi-residential. And as you know, the rural residential is places where you have a rural character with homes of one acre or more, separated by farm, fields, and forests. These are usually sparse road network and in private while in septic. But you can have some other non-commercial, non-residential uses like farmers markets and actors and related businesses. We are recommending approval of this request here. The intersection is not designated as a node, which would allow commercial uses. But they've already had two non-residential uses at this intersection. Also, Charlotte Highway is a principal arterial and Param Road is a major connector, so we already have a, a large road network right here. And the NC zoning district is very, is less permissive than the RC and the GC district. So therefore, you couldn't do any kind of fast food, no drive-through, no gas sales, no vehicle sales. And you can only have a maximum size building there for the NC is fifteen thousand square foot. So it's a relatively smaller kind of development. Any questions for staff?
Yes. So with the applicant living next door in the building there, if the lots were combined, would this still be a code enforcement issue?
Uh, if lots were combined, well, the code enforcement, one thing was, for the use part, you mean, or what? I mean, it's a code enforcement because he had a storage thing there, so, and it's also, it's a nuisance because it has a lot of junk. So yeah, it would still be a code enforcement case regardless. If lots were combined, then he couldn't do the commercial business there, because it would be, he has a home there, so he'd have to pick one or the other, so.
You couldn't go with the home-based.
Home occupation, not for this one, I think the largest, the sodas is too big.
I noticed the, in the packet, there was a letter from the applicant saying that the building permit was issued in two thousand and one, but it was never completed until two thousand, as, as the actual statement says, "Mr. Solano began construction and completed the necessary tests and inspections until two thousand and four, when York County placed the hold on the permit and electricity due to unspecified zoning and building code violations." The whole letter did not explain the violations or provide information on the process for correcting the violations.
I cannot speak to that permit or what happened in that permit, I don't think we're able to locate much information on that. But we do know that it was constructed for residential purposes. So therefore was never built under commercial code standards.
So it was never built under commercial code, okay.
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
So the same property owner owns both parcels, is that correct?
That's correct, he owns property next to him.
Okay, so what if one is sold, you know, to another owner, but with the shared driveway, is there any, you know?
Well, the, the property still has access onto Charlotte Highway, and they still have access onto Param. So they each have their own individual one, I would imagine if they were to sell that property, there'd be some kind of agreement that you can't cross it. So I don't think, I think he uses it for his own benefit, I don't think it would convey to the next person. And I don't think the plat shows any kind of reason to cross those two's properties, that's just there because it's, he lives there.
Is there, I think it said something in here that those two driveways on Param are really close to each other, and that really should be changed?
That's correct. So when this is gets, if this gets properly rezoned to, to neighborhood commercial, they would have to come in with a full site design. So that civil construction plans would have to then be brought to county standards. So we would likely have them close off the one closest to the intersection and just have that one access point there. But they'll have to put in, you know, buffers and paved parking and the bathroom has to be fixed, and the building itself has to meet the code as well, so that'll be a, a challenge.
Thanks Diane.
So for the code enforcement with the nuisance with the junk and things as you're talking about, is there a timeframe for that, or is that something we could include moving forward as a condition?
Well, we are still working with the applicant to get the property cleaned up. We've been working for a while, we hope that this, this action here will then encourage him to, when he comes in for a site design, to remove that, the rest of the junk. I don't think you need to beat it as a condition for the rezoning. It's up to you if you choose to do it, but.
I do have one more question Diane. The applicant's letter also says he intend, he, in the future, he may renovate the interior to construct a living space above his workshop. Does neighborhood commercial allow residential?
There is a mixed-use building, I do not believe this would be the characteristic of that, to be able to have a residential structure or space on this property here, I don't believe it does.
So like, for the neighborhood commercial, that would be really like a retailer office over.
Yes, that's the intent.
Residential over retailer office.
Exactly, that's the intent.
Diane, I got one more question. So it says in letter G on packet page forty-five, "While the rezoning proposes no change to existing non-permitted use, the site was never evaluated for a commercial use. Therefore, a TIA may be required if the number of trips meet the threshold." Is that something we're going to go back and check, or once we get plans, or what?
So that's correct, when they actually submit the civil construction plans, they'll have to fill out a preliminary site evaluation form as part of that, identify the number of trips that are going to be generated from this site. I think it's unlikely it'll be required, given what's going to go on for this particular use. Now, if this property gets sold and something else gets built there, you'd TIA potentially. But for this use, this location, it's unlikely they'll require anything.
Okay, you answer my question now, thanks.
And, um, I guess this ice, uh, ice cream and machine repair is allowed in neighborhood commercial?
Yes.
Is it under some just general?
It's, it's the retail sales and repair.
Got it.
Yeah, took us a while to get there, we found it.
Yeah, that's, that's why, that's why I asked, because I knew it was in there somewhere.
Determination was actually made on this one here.
Are there any additional questions? If no questions, is there a motion?
I would make a motion to deny, and I'll, I'll state my reasons. One, I, I feel like this issue, which has been going on for nearly twenty years, could have been resolved a long time ago. I don't feel like, I feel like this is only being done now just because there's pressure to get it resolved, you know, that started in April of two thousand and twenty-two. I feel like the, from two thousand and four until two thousand and twenty-two, I, I can't believe that there was no app, no initiative or no means to be able to provide, uh, someone at the county to provide the explanation for the violations and how to correct it. I, I am also going to say that I am not opposed to neighborhood commercial in this location. I do see the, um, the applicability of it, but I don't think that this business with the, the outdoor storage and all of that was really what was intended for neighborhood commercial zoning. And again, it's, and I've said this in the past, I'm, I, I, I don't feel, uh, I, I don't have a lot of, I don't know what the word would be, but I, maybe personally, I just, I don't have a lot of patience for people that permit buildings under one criteria and then turn around and use it for another. I feel like it was, it, it's not how most people want to do things. The fact that he runs a business out of there is, you know, power to him, and, and I hope he does well. But this isn't, this is not a place for a, for this type of use with all of this clutter on the outside, so I'll leave it up to however you guys want to do it.
And the building isn't up to commercial standards either, it was built as a residential building.
That's, that's, yeah, that was, it was permitted as a residential building.
Matt, I'm sure, did we have a second on that motion?
No, he was stating his reasons for making the motion.
That was all just speech.
Okay. So do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any?
John.
Sorry, is there any discussion on the motion? May I ask a question?
Sure.
So Matt, you kind of implied that the business has to have all the outside storage and junk.
No, I'm not saying it has to have the outside storage, I'm saying it's, you know, that's one of the deterrents, or that's one of the detriments to the surrounding neighborhood is all this stuff sitting outside. And it really has nothing to do with the business, if you look at the pictures.
No, I know, it's, I mean, it, it literally is what looks like just, you know, discarded stuff. So I guess, I'm torn, I understand what you're saying, but is there a way to, would it, would it help you if it was a cleaner environment?
I think in, you know, the year and a half since the initial issue came up, other than removing the shipping container, I mean, I, I don't know of anything else that's been done. I mean, can you, if, if you have anything to add to it, I'm more than.
Sure, I can add, I'll add two things to that one. There has been over time improvements and then back to where it was, so it's kind of ebbed and flowed over the years. As far as your outside storage component, that would not happen in the future. So the neighborhood commercial use would not allow outside storage. So he is required to bring the site up to code, so all of that exterior stuff would have to be removed. And I'll also say that once the rezoning is, he's still under violation. And I'll also say that once a rezoning is, he's still under violation. And this doesn't, does not resolve many of his violations. And then once he finishes this process, assuming it goes forward, it goes to council and they approve it, he must submit a s- commercial site plan right away and move forward with that. Otherwise, he's back into violation. So, you know, but, you know, this has been an ongoing problem and I understand that and I appreciate that.
I do, I, I, I understand that as well.
Could we stipulate where he has, he or she has a certain amount of time to correct the violations? And then it could come back to us as, I mean, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we would say, we would have them correct the violation for a nuisance violation and then come back to you to rezone it. I think this, we've been waiting for that. And nuisance violations at this point do not preclude us to going forward as a zoning violation does. And so he would just go forward and would have to work with code enforcement to see if we can get it into, you know, the site into compliance. And let, you know, that and the judge take care of these things.
I just, you know, it's also, um, you know, in the, in the past year and a half, we haven't even gotten, you know, like a sketch plan for what a site plan would look like, you know, something.
Right.
The only thing that's been done, from what I understand, is the shipping container, the few improvements that have been flowing in the rezoning, so.
That's correct.
It hasn't been a lot, in my opinion, it, I don't feel like a lot has been done out there to help mitigate all of these issues. And, um, I don't feel like a rezoning at this point would necessarily.
Resolve the issues.
Resolve, yeah, exactly. I don't think it would resolve all of these issues. I think, um, I, I would like to see more on the front end done so that there's less to talk about. If it's just the building we have to deal with and, and the site requirements, then, you know, that's a whole separate thing that you guys deal with later on. But, I mean, we still have, you know, we still have lots of, lots of stuff out, outside that is, that's sitting there, that's been sitting there and it hasn't been addressed at all.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table that has, we've made a motion and there's been a second.
That's correct.
And then we've.
And some discussion, go ahead.
I think we need to have executive session on, some legal counsel on this.
Okay, um, so is there a motion to move into executive session? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? We'll be right back again.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Moving on to twenty-three dash thirty-eight.
Case number twenty-three dash thirty-eight, two eighty-three Country Haven Lane and seventeen eighteen Country Lodge Road in Fort Mill. Tax map number six five nine zero 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 one three. This is a request to rezone a zero point nine nine acre parcel from RSF thirty to RMX ten. And the purpose is to subdivide the parcel to create a separate lot for each home. And this one has a little bit of background to it in that at some point, I don't know when, this property was erroneously subdivided. And they made a mistake. When they realized that, the parcel was recombined. During that time was when the homes, the two homes were actually built. And so that little snip there in the picture there, that was from a map from nineteen eighty-six. And that does show the two separate parcels. They've been, two separate parcels up until I think it was August of this year, when they were recombined into one parcel. So the request is to be able to rezone the property to subdivide it. Property's located within, just outside of the town of Fort Mill on the west side of I seventy-seven. This is a, like I said, everything in the gray area there, that is the town of Fort Mill. This is an older part of Fort Mill, near Harris Boulevard, I seventy-seven. Zooming in, you can see the two parcels, or the two homes. There's one on the bottom. This was a home here, there's a mobile home right over here. The intent is to be able to subdivide it to be able to have two lots for the different homes. Now, there are some buildings here that might make this challenging, which might require a variance coming forward to the board zoning appeals. I think they may be able to move this building here. That's an above-ground pool. Maybe we'll do some moving of stuff to make that work. No environmental features here. There's no water. The property here is relatively flat. Zoning for the area, the majority of this area is RSF thirty, and so a lot of them already have non-conforming lots. This area here for the comprehensive land use plan recommends transitional area. And that's a new one for us. We've never had an item come forward with that request. And so what this is for is the adaption of single-family homes into small office uses or slightly higher-density residential areas. And you'll see this in more, like along Sutton, some along Gold Hill Road, some along Zora Road. And these are areas where you might be able to assemble some properties to be able to make some either higher-density development there, or some offices can go there. As we're showing here, uses can be single-family residential, town homes, duplex, triplex, or a quadplex. You can do an office there, maybe a medical office. That's the intent of this, but it allows you to go a little bit higher density. So we're recommending approval. This request with the RMX ten, like I mentioned, does have that slightly higher density recommended by the future Land Use Designation Nation. There are two homes that have been there for a long time, so they aren't going to change the scale of development. This will create, some of these will create lots that are very similar to those in that same vicinity. So any questions for staff on this one?
Diane, you were just talking about possible offices there, so...
In the, well, in that, in the land use designation, not for that zoning district. So the land use designation would allow for some office. This actual zoning district does not. It's definitely going to be for homes.
Homes, okay. You brought up about, so a, if they're going to subdivide this, they need to put some kind of line, right? Line demarcation in there, and then move the pool or whatever back accordingly to make sure...
There's a couple of ways they can do it. They can either move the buildings, move the pool, move that storage, or I think it's a trailer cover, or request a variance. I don't know which way they're going to go, but those are going to be the, there'll be some challenges to get that property subdivided. But they'll encounter that after the property gets rezoned.
So with RMX ten, that, that, that has a certain distance, right?
It's a ten thousand, so RMX ten is a ten thousand square foot lot. And so we chose that district only because that allows for those two homes to make that ten thousand square foot or minimum. And so they do have setbacks required. I don't know if it's ten or five, or whatever that would happen to be. I don't know what they're on top of my head for the setbacks.
Thanks.
I have a couple of, can you tell me a little bit more about the error? And the error was on the county's part, or what?
You know, I really don't know. It was, it was the assessor's office. I don't know where the error was. They have been taxed and paying on two separate parcels for all this time. I don't know what, what, what instigated them to come, to subdivide the property. It wasn't until the, they actually applicant contacted the assessor's office, I think it's for sale, and they wanted to make sure they had these two lots. And they found out that, oh, it shouldn't be. Maybe requesting a plat, I'm not certain. And the applicant is here, then I can talk to it better.
So the county has been billing for two separate parcels all this time?
They have, yes.
Okay. So my real quick question is, there was a five hundred and fifty dollar fee paid to do this?
That's correct.
That was my next question, too.
Okay. If, if this was an error on the county's part, I don't believe that the applicant should have to pay a fee to try and clear up a record keeping issue with the county.
Well, it was an error on the county's part to, to make two separate lots, but it never was, it was always one lot. So it's an error in a sense that, but it was one lot.
But the county for all this time has been billing two separate tax records.
That's correct.
Okay. So that, to me, if I'm receiving two separate tax records from the county, you guys believe it's two separate lots. Now, if you come back to me and say, whoops, we made a mistake, I don't believe that I should have to pay a fee for you to correct the mistake. I'll be glad to sign the paperwork, work towards whatever zoning you need me to do. But I don't believe the applicant should have to pay a fee for that.
And I appreciate your thoughts, but there's nothing I can, I cannot waive fees. I don't have the authority to do that.
Okay. Well, then I, I would like to see, hopefully, county council take action on that when it gets to them. Because if we approve this here, it's still going to go to them. And I would like for you to pass that along from me to council, that I believe their fees should be refunded in this case. Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Is this more of a situation where this is bringing everything into compliance, basically?
It will bring it to compliance because it is one lot. It's always supposed to have been one lot. And so, yes, so right now it's illegal non-conforming use because there are two parcels, there are two homes on that property. So this will actually bring it into compliance to do this.
And, yeah, and Diane, please understand, I understand you're operating within the rules you've got.
Absolutely.
This is nothing against you personally or staff. I think this is something that ought to be a matter of county policy. And if we need to update our regulations as such, that if an error like this is discovered, and we ask an applicant to, hey, we need to fill out this paperwork and get everything squared away because it was an error on the county's part, then I don't think the applicant should have to pay a fee to correct that.
Correct.
And however we stipulate that, whatever rules we want to put in place, just to make that easier for you all in the future.
Fine. So, moving forward, is there a motion with, if you wanted a stipulation of that kind?
Well, I, I make a motion that we approve this, and I'd like this discussion about the fee to be passed on to county council.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Twenty-three dash thirty-nine?
Yep. Case twenty-three thirty-nine, James and Heather Rogers on Steel Village Road in Rock Hill, five two two zero 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 one four and zero two one. So the request here is to rezone a five point six three acre portion of two parcels, so a little bit of both parcels, from R E D to A G C. And they have requested to be able to allow them to submit a recombination plat to transfer a portion of the larger lot onto the smaller lot. They want to make the smaller lot a little bit bigger. They want to get it to at least six acres. And so they already have a split zoning. They must go, they must have the properties rezoned. Located in the southern part of the county, actually almost to the Chester County line off of Steel Village Road. This area here is still very rural, very large lots, lots of trees, lots of pastures and open space. But there are still some homes in the area as well. Zooming into just the parcel that's going to be adding to, you see there already is a single-family home there. So they're going to rezone that to A G C as well as the area just around it. It's, it is, there is some slope to the property, a very large lot in the country, also has some streams to the, on the larger property. Once again, here is the area that's to be rezoned. It's a portion of the smaller lot and a portion of the bigger lot. There is other A G C in the area as well as some R E D and some light industrial. Comprehensive plan for the area here is agricultural. And we know that is for farmlands and timberlands and very low-density residential development, some cottage industries and ag support commercial also in the area. We're recommending approval. It aligns with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. Any questions to staff?
Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Next one is case twenty-three forty, eighteen hundred Gold Hill Road in Fort Mill, six five zero 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 two one. The request is to rezone a zero point eight two four acre parcel from N C to G C. It's to allow a twenty-nine hundred square foot addition to an existing legal non-conforming gas station. And because of the size of the actual addition, this does trigger the requirement to bring the site to comply with buffers, parking, and other related issues, including the additional removal of some of those driveways. Property, like I mentioned, is located in Fort Mill. It is just to the west of the intersection of one sixty and Gold Hill Road. This is a, a area that includes lots of commercial, multifamily, single-family residential as well. And just as a map here showing you the actual garage or gas station. And I've shown you kind of sketched in where this addition would occur. And it's a very significant portion to be added to the property. They'll still maintain the gas station, but they're going to add some more of the convenience part of it. Property here is relatively flat with no environmental features. Zoning for the area, the majority of this, almost the entire area here is already zoned G C. There's a little bit of O I just to the west. Comprehensive land use plat map, planned map shows this as being a community center. And as we know, that is where you have a broad array of commercial and service establishments to attract patrons from a region. Located where you can accommodate all modes of transportation, including transit. We are recommending approval for this request here. It aligns with the comprehensive plan, the future land use map. It'll remove the parcel's existing non-conforming status, and it also gives an opportunity to be able to bring this site closer to the current development standards. Any questions from, for staff?
Yeah, Diane, go back to the aerial of showing the addition. I didn't see that in here.
I drew that for here, but in this, in the package, there is a site plan.
Okay.
And you'll see a sketch, a little area where I think it's in red, where it says addition goes there. And so, yeah, that's on the site plan. And I, I added that to the aerial so you could see. I thought without those, all those lines in the site plan made it confusing.
Okay. I don't know what the setbacks are for, that looks like it's really close.
That's just, that's just me drawing a rectangular. That's all that is. So the only part with setbacks, whatever they happen to be. So, yeah, that's just, that's not where it's going to be. That's just a sketch.
Yeah. Well, I agree with that. It's going to be, is it going to be similar use?
Same use. It'll be extending some of the convenience part of that. So the interior part of, I think the beverage store.
So Diane, what parts of the prop, you mentioned non-conforming. For which parts of the property is non-conforming?
So I can start with the fact that there are three access points. Their separation requirements are not, are not being met. So they'll probably require to be closed probably just one. We'll, we'll analyze that to see which one needs to be closed to still allow the movement for the tractor-trailers to provide gas. It'll require some, some buffering along the front. So perhaps where they remove the access point, they'll have to go back in there and put some, some buffers. Probably some parking needs to be paved as well. Those are the three that come to mind. I think there's a dumpster in the front, has to go in the back. So those are the things that just kind of pop out when I first look at it.
So if, let's say if we approve this, I'm assuming this will come back to us in the form of like a site plan or something like that?
No, you guys don't see commercial site plans.
Okay.
So, and different from what a previous one where you saw, it's very similar a few months ago for another gas station just up the road. Because that was at a different stage and it wasn't doing a large outfit for the outside, we asked you to put a condition to do some things that we weren't able to do ourselves. But because this is coming through now, and we have the opportunity to be able to make them do those requirements, those improvements, we don't need a condition from you to have it done. The code takes care of that for us.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Twenty-three forty-one?
Okay. Case twenty-three forty-one from Mark Daniel Lindsay at seven oh one Porter Road in Rock Hill, tax map number six seven two zero 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 five three. So the intent is to be able to cut the property probably right there and to be able to build a house somewhere in some flatlands in this property in the back. As you can see, there is two streams crossing this property and the topography here, these are, I think these are a ten-foot scale. The one-foot scale, you can see the slopes, they write down to the, to the stream, but there are a couple of areas where you can do some, a nice flatland for a home. The zoning map for the area, the majority of the area here is U D, that's that dark gray showing. Everything in the light gray, that's the city of Rock Hill. And there's also some R S F thirty, that's that yellow color around there as well. So it's kind of aligned with some districts already in that area there. Future land use plat, this is plant, land use plan map, this is considered the um, municipal infill. And as you know, that are areas where they are either within a donut hole, they're close to, they abut a municipal boundary. And the intention here is to make a seamless transition between the county and the towns. And uh, so we actually returned to their, the future land use map and their plans to see what they recommend. Now, the city of Rock Hill, they recommend interstate employment for this area here. And they see this as being an opportunity to, to provide manufacturing warehouses and freight-type uses. So, we are recommending approval. This, look, this request does not align with the comprehensive plan. That's looking at, if you're looking at just the map itself. Um, this development will, uh, of one home will not preclude in the future, if they wanna redevelop it in some other way, if they wanna be able to get utilities from the city to make it something different, they can still rezone it and still do that. Um, like I mentioned, the parcel side and the tree coverage, it's a very treed lot. So that, those trees in itself and the topography changes will provide an adequate buffer from the other uses that are nearby. For instance, the other develop, other, other large um, distribution centers. And that parcel's also, its unusual shape will make it very difficult to be able to develop as some kind of a freight-related business as it is. And therefore, for those reasons, we're recommending approval. Any questions for staff?
What's the house's access to Porter Road right now, the existing home? Is it crossing the other property?
So, it's hard to tell at this scale. There is a drive, this one here goes out this way and access, there's the drive, actually it kinda comes up and around and goes out over there. Um, so it's, it's unusual, but.
Well, I, I know, but.
So, when they, when they subdivide it, this lot here, we'll be able to access it on the Porter Road and maybe they'll reorganize that one to come out there as well.
Okay. They obviously have a right-of-way.
They sure do. They have Eastman's. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any additional questions? I'll make a motion to accept.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
So this, this, this next item here is the Westport Residential Community is to receive the updated T I A. And I'm gonna walk you through this. I gave you a packet with a lot of information there and you've probably never seen that much information for a T I A before. And so it was, I'm sure, is interesting. And so just to give you some overview of what we are here. Uh, Westport Development, the Plimary Platt is eight-hundred-and-forty-two lots on four-hundred-and-thirty-two acres. It covers pods nine through twelve of the Allison Creek Development Agreement, which I think you may be aware of. That covers a very large area over in the Allison Creek area off of two-seventy-four. It was done in two thousand and eight. And it was intention fair wish for the Daimler when they were to come and all these uses to support that. So in twenty-seven, that of course didn't happen. They built Daimler, nothing came forward. And in twenty-seventeen, you, the piece, the planning commission approved the Plimary Platt of Westport. And I'll show you a picture of what that lap, that is in a minute here. Um, with the condition that prior to the start of phase two, a revised T I A to be completed and submitted to the P C. And that's just for you to see it and receive it. Um, so in February twenty, twenty-twenty-three, they did that. The applicant is up to the T I A. They submitted to the town, or to the county as well as D O T, and we both approved the T I A. And this was the plat that was approved in, uh, in two thousand and, in twenty-seventeen, and they're moving forward with that. Um, as you may know, they've already started working on this parts here. This is Camp, I'm sorry, over here, Campbell Road, um, and just, this is two-seventy-four. Highway forty-nine comes through here, and this is the Westport Boulevard kinda running through this project here. So the T I A process in an overview, just to kinda give you what that is. First thing to do is estimate trip generation based upon the uses, number of units, and then how they're gonna distribute them. So where are they gonna be coming from, where are they gonna be going to? And then once they've done that, they do an intersection, a capacity analysis. And so they will examine intersections to see how are they, are they, are they failing, are they fine? They look at each movement, whether they're going straight forward, left or right. Um, then they will determine the potential impact. So what is this development doing on that intersection? What are these new trips happening on that intersection? How is it affecting it? And then once they figure out that, they'll say, okay, do any mitigation? Are what we doing, are we causing it to fail? Are we causing it to be okay? Is it already failing? What happens then? So that's sort of what they're looking at when they're looking, doing a T I A. And so for this one, they were looking at eight intersections and three access points. So kinda moving from the top here, moving down two-seventy-four, Charlotte Highway and Bethelfield, going down to West Liberty and Pinnacle, Concord, I'm sorry, Concord Road, Allison, Allison Creek, Campbell Road, Param. Uh, so like I said, we're looking at eight different intersections all around the site as well as three access points. And so that is where the new development will be accessing the existing road. So these are all existing sites. This is access number one, the northern part up here off of forty-nine. Access two on the south off of forty-nine, and access three is referred to as, it's one on Campbell Road. And so they're looking at both, how are people moving from the site and how are people moving to the site? And so what they do is they do a capacity analysis and they determine the existing delay at each intersection. And how long are people waiting to make a movement, whether it's going left, right, or, or straight? They calculate the background delay at build-out. So what that means, like we're talking about before Mike, is they're gonna figure out, if this never happened, what's going on at this development based upon what's planned to come there? So that is gonna be the background of build-out twenty-thirty, but the twenty-thirty is the build-out. So what's coming in this intersection, even if they never came? So you have that number, and then you figure out what's gonna happen if we develop it. So what's gonna be the number of trips generated when you have the background and the build-out? So those are different levels of, of how we're looking at it. And according to the code, you must maintain a level of service, L O S, D, or better. Um, if the development causes it to fail, they must make an improvement. If it's already failing, depending upon if they make it worse, they make an improvement. If they don't make it any worse, they do nothing. So if they already have a failing intersection, it doesn't get any worse, there's no mitigation. So those are the kinda different levels of how they would actually do something to that intersection. So in this one, like I mentioned, we had eight intersections and three access points for a total of eleven. The results of that T I A, when they do all their cr, the number crunching and figuring out their, uh, where everything is going and do the signal analysis, there were four that were gonna need some kind of a mitigation or a change. And of that, only one of them was actually a current intersection. And that was at the intersection of two-seventy-four and Allison, Allison Creek Road. And that was to be a cost-sharing with the Lakeside Develop, Lakeside Glen Development for a traffic signal. Well, if you've ever driven out there recently, you know, it's already up. So the Lakeside Glen, they were required to build that traffic light. It's already in there, it's installed, it's functioning. So that issue for that intersection has been mitigated and that's completed. So what they're left with is three mitigation, we call them mitigation. It might seem like it's, they're actually for, uh, it's for the access points for people coming and going from the actual site. And so for this, what they're required to do is, and you can show it in the, in the documents there, is there to construct north and southbound turn lanes. And then it also defines what is going to be the ingress and egress from the site. So for instance, on the northern side, they have to have a three-lane ingress cross-section. That means it's gonna be one coming in and two coming out. One's gonna go dedicated left, one's gonna go through share right. And the same, and then for the two, this access number two, once again, northbound, southbound turn lanes, and then construct just one ingress and one egress. No having to do any kind of right or through share. And then for the three, same thing as number two, uh, turn lanes and then ingress and, and one egress. So that's a requirement, and those are all being part of their civil construction plans to demonstrate and to build those, those requirements. So we are recommending that staff, uh, at the planning commission accept the T I A dated January two thousand and three for the Westport Residential Community at Allison Creek, along with the traffic, technical memorandum dated April twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. So that was the document that came back from the app, from the applicant's engineer, addressing some of the comments from the first review. So that's what we're asking you to do. Any questions?
I'm looking over to you, Mike DiRalia.
Well, while he looks down, I'm gonna ask a question. How about that? Uh, packet page one-twenty-two, I, I just wanna be sure the county's comfortable with the counts. Um, and, and as much as I hate to bring this up, uh, I'm, I'm just concerned that the, the counts may not exactly be a hundred percent accurate because it says twenty-twenty-two field counts were factored by three percent to represent twenty-twenty-three existing traffic volumes. Because I'm one that was working from home and has slowly been working my way back to the office by requirement. My concern is that twenty-twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two field counts were still depressed from COVID.
They may have been, and there was a time where the county did have a COVID-related policy, but that was, was um, stopped, was ceased at a certain point where you felt there was enough traffic that had come back into the um, into the workplace and not require them to do that.
Yeah. I, but I can tell you between, this, 'cause I, I drive every week to Charlotte. Between twenty-twenty-two and this would have been done in twenty-twenty-three, traffic volumes are significantly higher in twenty-three. And that, that's my concern, is that the numbers represented in the study may actually be depressed.
Yeah, I, I, and I think also we added that three percent growth rate too, which is a substantial year-to-year growth rate, um, is, is pretty high. So I think that would help mitigate part of that as well.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's the concern I've got. We already have traffic issues in the county.
What page was that on? Is the actual T I A page? If you could help me with that one?
Seven, seven.
Thank you.
D O T also approved this.
They did. D O T approved it. It's their road. They, they were okay with the numbers as well. So was the county.
In the end, it's their road, so.
I mean, it is.
You know.
And then, I mean, the question's always gonna be, are we ever gonna get back to where we were before? I think we've, we're getting closer, but we're not still, you know, so.
I'm just, it makes, makes me nervous when, when they do an actual count on depressed traffic volumes and then try to do an estimation.
Right. But that's, I mean, we, that's very typical that we do a traffic count and then we just, that's how the process works. That's how the, the, um, the guidelines require, they're set up that way, is you do your count and.
I understand, but it was a unique scenario.
Right, right.
For the number of people working from home, and that's where my concern is, is that traffic is not properly mitigated. I may be the only person sitting here saying that, but I don't think that was properly factored in.
Yep, real, so on, well, it's page one-fifty-two of our packet. I don't know what page it is in the T I A. I guess it'd be thirty-seven.
There should be page numbers of the twenty-seven. Thank you.
Maybe thirty-seven? So does that show the final with all the mitigations in place? Is that what that drawing is telling us?
So that is figure eight-point-one? Is that what you're looking at?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. So this is showing where all the different mitigations would be and the extra lanes and the stack-ups and, is that right?
No, so what, this is. Oh, yeah, that would be. That would tell you the um, access points, where the lanes are, where the turning points are, yes.
So, so this is really the map of all the mitigation that has to happen?
That's correct.
Based on this? Okay.
Yes.
And then, then how do you, it, it may be in here already, so how do you have the, and I was, I guess Diane, I'm getting my training class I've been asking for right now, right?
I knew that, yeah.
Okay, so. If, if we go back to like, just for an example, so it'd be figure four-point-two, which is on our packet one-twenty-eight. And I guess it'd be page thirteen of the, right? So that, that starts to show you some of the data. Right? Twenty-thirty background P M peak hours, what they estimated to be, right?
Right, so figure four-point-two is the background P M peak hour traffic volumes. And so you'll see that, um, all the numbers by the different turn points, that's, that's showing you where, um.
A M, P M, what's happening.
A M, P M, right, and that's background. That's why you don't see the site there because that's background.
So, so do they ever have a combination of that that makes it real easy for you to see like before mitigation, after mitigation, what those numbers are, like all on one sheet? It, it seems like, and I'm not.
So, so I think what kinda is helpful is when you actually go to see how that is, like some of the tables that are maybe on, let me show you one that would be on. Let's just take Hansville Highway at Campbell Road, page twenty-five, my packet, my, the T I A page twenty-five. And so you'll see, you'll see where it shows, um, this is one intersection and it talks about the two twenty-three existing. Then you see the background and you see the build-out. So we as reviewers, we're gonna go right here. And this is gonna show us, what is it happening now? What is it happening at the background? And what's the build-out? So how is the, the level of service, and for instance, for the eastbound, which is the E B, eastbound left, eastbound right, it's a C in twenty-twenty-three, it's a C in twenty-thirty, it's a C at twenty, at, at the build-out. So this is where we get our information to figure out, okay, that intersection is not changing, intersection is fine. So they take all those previous ones on that figure that had all the different turns and everything, they stick it into the model, and the model pumps out this.
Right, right, and that.
So that's where the, we look at.
I, I guess what I'm saying is that, that, like a figure four that we looked at shows you all those turns, everything that's happening, the A M, P M, the numbers where they are, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think it would be a really handy thing if you had that on the same chart that you got your before and your after number. So here's where it is now, and then with this proposed and all the mitigations, this is what it's gonna change to. Right? It just, that, that's a ve, the visual is awesome to be able to look at this and see all the, here's the access points, here's existing places. Hey, there's the light that just went into Allison Creek. But on that, they just show you the, the lanes and things that were added for mitigation.
If you go to figure five-point-two and figure five-point-three.
There we go, walking around, five-point-two. Yep, okay.
Twenty-thirty build-out, A M peak and P M peak. And that tells you, okay, we've done everything, our mitigation is in, this is what you're, these are your numbers. But you know, if you look at that, those numbers don't mean anything. It's until you figure out what's the delay. So you don't know what, what, you know, fifteen cars in, how does that fifteen cars going to affect the intersection down the road? So this gives you an idea as to where they're kinda coming from, how they're getting there. You'll see the distribution of that. But it isn't until you look at that table to see actually.
Volume versus flow.
Yes, and that's what we wanna know is the flow. And so that, that, those tables tell you, how is that, how are these trips going to affect? And that's what you need to know, the intersection.
These guys are making me do too much homework here. I'm looking for the one-page summary, right?
That's right.
You know, and I'll just make a comment. This is a very, very comprehensive report. This is one of the best I've seen in a while. I will tell you that right now. Um, but that level, like what Diane was talking about, level of service, that's what has to be determined at each intersection or whatever, whatever the road system intersects with. And this is very comprehensive. They, and they split it out in like ten different tables. Um, going back to Greg, what you were mentioning on, on historical growth. Um, I think Diane, you were saying like each year it's three percent, and that's what it says on page ten. Uh, of course, based on the approved growth rate, blah, 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 that was confirmed by S C D O T in New York County that Matt had brought up. The existing twenty-twenty-three peak traffic volumes were grown by an annual rate of three percent for seven years to twenty-thirty, so pretty conservative. So I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I just thought I'd. Right. Okay.
But I will say three percent, that's a lot. We aren't, I mean, that's a very high number. For instance, we recently did one in the Fort Mill area and we did that same analysis, and their annual growth rate was one-point-five. That's what, based upon the trend of the number of uh, growth and everything, it was one-point-five, so three-point-five is, is. Yeah. They're still adding more. Yeah, I, I get that, yes, if you max out, you're built out this amount, you can't, but. Yeah, they're still adding. Right.
And you've got a four-lane bridge at forty-nine, a two-lane bridge over.
Yes. Yeah.
I did have a question.
Sure.
The only major four-lane road that's not captured in this is Daimler Boulevard. But I'm sure Clover School District's T I A will.
It does.
Include that information.
Absolutely, it does.
Question one, have they submitted one yet?
Yes.
For the school, okay.
For T I A, yes, sir.
For T I A, okay. And do we know how that?
It's still under review.
Affects this?
Um, and I think there was a note in this one here because they submitted it ahead of time. I don't believe they added the school for this one here.
Okay.
Um, because at that point, two schools, correct. At that point, that school hadn't been announced or hadn't been, you know, we eventually, but it wasn't at the time. Um, but yeah, they have submitted their T I A, it's been through a few reviews.
Okay, so that, that T I A and the T I A for the development that we just approved tonight, and the one that we approved last week, are all gonna affect the traffic count?
Yes, yes. And I believe this one here would have taken into account the planned development, including, I think it may have included these ones as well.
Okay, but not the schools?
Not the school. From what I remember, it was not the school. I think there was a comment about that.
So when you get done reviewing the schools, how do you, kind of to your point earlier today, how do we merge that information and then who's responsible for any mitigation?
It all becomes upon who puts in first. So for instance, for the school, they have, they have a, the, the, um, the roundabout that's going to service forty-nine and two seventy-four is required by either, I think, either the school or the development. Whoever comes in first must build that roundabout. So it's all about timing.
Are there any additional questions? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can I make a, ask that you do it as it's on their board to accept the T I A?
That we approve, that we accept the T I A dated January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three for Westport, Westport Residential Community at Allison Creek, along with the related transportation technical memorandum dated April twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Is this technically T I A, the, the, uh, Westport three?
Well, it was Westport three, I think, is the title of this package. I think because there was a, there was a Westport two that had a different configuration for the Westport, and that was Westport two that went away, and now it's Westport three.
Okay, do we need to?
No, it doesn't matter.
Specify that, it doesn't matter, okay.
So there's a motion, and.
A second.
A second, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Uh, moving on to the tracking sheet, any questions or concerns? Sarah, motion to adjourn?
No, I, I just have one or two small issues to discuss. Um, it's, the first one is, um, I, I don't know if anyone's aware, but, uh, at the last council meeting.
This is not on the agenda. If you'd like to talk about something specifically, you need to let us know, we'll put it on the agenda for next month. But you can't just talk about things that aren't on the agenda. Sorry.
Can we have a item put on the agenda next month for discussion about, uh, number of members for the planning commission?
Is that just a request, or do we need to ask?
We can't talk about it, so I'm requesting, so.
You can make the request, I suppose, and we can talk with the chairperson about that.
Yes, may, maybe the best thing to do for that will be to email, um, Diane and, and me.
Okay.
So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Have a good night.